Please rise for President Allegiance.
Before we do our roll call, we have a new board. I'd like to introduce the new board to the public. To your right over here is Mr. Jim Rogers. Mrs. Michelle Stepanik, she's a former member, she's absent tonight. Then we have Steve Schlaub, and then Dickie Rossler, our solicitor, Lee Price, Superintendent Tim Glasspool. Over to your far left is our business manager, Jeanne Maricini, Sal Colella, Susan Caldwell, Michelle Gallagher, Rich Zuko, and Cindy Vento is our Board Secretary, and I'm Kevin Dowdell, I was elected the Board President. Okay, roll call, Mrs. Vento?
Mrs. Caldwell, here. Mr. Colella?
Here.
Mr. Dowdell?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mrs. Rossler?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Schlaub?
Here.
Mrs. Stepanik is absent, and Mr. Zuko?
Here.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Michelle Gallagher, and it is my honor to serve as the Athletic Chair for Plum Berle School District and recognize all the athletes this evening and those that represent the purple and gold. So, I'm very excited about this evening. We have a lot to get through, and as tradition, if you are a senior, once you receive your certificate at the end, could you please tell us what your plans are beyond Plum High School and what your college plans are, or whatever you plan to do after you leave here? So, with that, we are going to call up the girls volleyball coach, Cory Flaherty, and their team record was eight and eight, and they won the Plum Invitational, and 92 percent of the volleyball team earned honor roll status, and 20 of the girls earned Scholar Athletes 3.5 GPA or above.
All right, yeah, so I'm Cory Flaherty, the volleyball coach. A little bit of my thunder was stolen. I was going to talk about the incredible work, or school, and team balance that these girls show every year. Three hours in the court every night from August, actually May really, we start our offseason workouts, and these girls, fantastic in the classroom, just role model students. And I have a few of the leaders of the team here tonight. So we did, we had a pretty interesting season. We had a team added to our section at the last minute, which made it a little bit tougher to make the playoffs. This is the first time since I've been coaching here in the last six years that we haven't qualified for the playoffs. But ironically, it was actually my favorite season, and a lot of that is due to the girls that are here tonight and some of the other girls that didn't make it. We had a very competitive season. Every single game, almost every single game, it's a best-of-five format. We went to nearly five games every single time, and just missed the playoffs by literally a few points this year. So, we'll be working hard to make sure we get ourselves back in that hunt next year. And I wanted to recognize some of our all-section award winners tonight. I have a few that aren't here, actually, two that aren't here. Emma Carroll was listed as an honorable mention for the all-section team. Megan Rengers was a third-team all-section team member. Both of them are seniors. And then I have four girls that are here. We had Cassidy Saboslay. You want to come up? Cassidy was our libero for the past two seasons, really the heart and soul of the defense of the team, if you will. And I'll let her tell you her college plans here in a minute. I'll get through all of the girls first. We'll go Skylar. Skylar is our lone junior here. A middle hitter for us, really provided a lot of offense. This girl can jump and hit the ball pretty darn hard. Teams don't like her very much. We also have my two captains this year. Matty Gestrich was second-team all-section. My setter for the past few seasons. Matty also earned, I know a few weeks ago at the high school, she was presented with the KDKA Extra Effort Award, so we're very proud of her for that. And just a tremendous leader on and off the court. A lot of our team chemistry really came through Matty and the way she led the team. Last but not least, we have Claire Hankinson. Claire was our other middle hitter. She qualified for the first team. She was our lone first-team all-section member. She actually also made the third-team all-Whipple. That's the second year in a row we've had an all-Whipple athlete on our team. And just recently, we found out that Claire earned a spot on the S-Mark All-American Team. So that's a new honor for us this year. Very proud of her for that. So I'll let Cassidy and the other seniors let you know what they're doing afterwards.
It's a little tall. Thank you. Thanks. So, I know I'm going to college, I just don't know where yet. Probably RMU, though, so, yeah. Okay. I'll be going to LaRoche College to study nursing, where I'll continue playing volleyball.
I'm not sure where I'm going to go to college yet, but I plan on playing college volleyball, so undecided at the moment.
Okay, so next, we are going to have girls soccer, and the head coach is Caitlin Schukert, and the team record was 15 and 3, and they qualified for the Whipple playoffs. They defeated Moon in the first round and lost to Whipple champion Norwin in the quarterfinals. 91 percent of the soccer team earned honor roll status, though. Caitlin?
Hi. First, I want to thank the school board. I see you guys around sometimes, but it's nice to see faces in the crowd, you know, 7:30 when everybody's supposed to be with their family, and we're out in the freezing cold at a soccer game. It's nice to see some of you sometimes. So, thank you for your support. I want to thank Mr. Alpino, because he's always there for us. I know he's there for all the athletics, but he's there for us as well. I want to thank Plum Area Soccer. We had some girls come out, some young youth teams come out and be our ball girls for the, for some of the home games, which gets them ready to hopefully play when they get to high school as well. And the parents, and of course, my players. You took some of my stuff, too, that I have written down. But this was a season that I think we set probably a lot of school records, if records were kept. We scored 101 goals in 16 games, which is pretty amazing, and only had four goals scored against us. We lost two games in our section. That was to Fox Chapel, one nothing. So, we came in second in our section. A goal of ours was to win the section, which would have been for the first time in school history. We came up a little bit short of that goal, but we did make it to the Whipple playoffs. And for the first time in school history, we won for the second year in a row. So, we lost last year in the first, in the second round to Moon, and we got to play them again in the first round, beat them, and then lost in the second round to the Whipple champions. So, if you're going to end the season, I guess you want to end it to the people who win it all. 12 shutouts, you know, over 100 goals for the season, only eight goals up we let up the entire year. So, this was, you know, these are goals that we set, but we've definitely surpassed every goal that we had set this year, as far as individually and for the team. I only have one girl that could make it today, because two of them are on the basketball team as well, and one had to work. But to talk about the one senior that I do have here, we had four girls make all-section, and we had two players make the all-Whipple team, which is a tough thing to crack. But Nicolette is here. Nicolette Casarsia, she's a team captain, four-year starter, scored 12 goals for us, eight goals against. Two really big game winners, was voted Valley News Dispatch second team, and also represents the United States. She plays in Europe every summer and represents the United States. This would be her third year coming up, her third summer. So, that's Nicolette. If you want to come up and stand with me. For the players who aren't here, Chelsea Hubner was our goalkeeper this year. She was also a team captain, four-year starter. She also got all-section. This is her second year as well, along with Nicolette. She did make all-Whipple this year as a goaltender, Valley News Dispatch first team. And then, she's not here, but her plans are to attend West Virginia-Wesland on a soccer scholarship. So, and again, her 12 shutouts for the year are most likely a school record. So, that's Chelsea. She's not here with us today, but just some things about her. Another honorary, her name's Brianna Schlegel, team captain as a junior, three-year starter. This is her first year that she made all-section, and then she was voted Valley News Dispatch third team. And last but not least, if you don't know her, you probably should, Ashley Amato, she's a basketball player, a soccer player, and also a all-state competitor in track and field. I have the honor of coaching her in soccer, and she scored 30 goals this season. I think she was like fourth or fifth in the whole Whipple for goals scored. A team captain, her junior and senior year, a four-year starter, three-year all-section winner. This is her second time being on the all-Whipple selection team. Valley News Dispatch, she was voted first team, and then also last week, she was voted Player of the Year for the Valley News. So, her plans are to attend Akron University. She is verbally committed to play soccer there as well. So, a lot of big accomplishments we made this year for the soccer team, and thank you all for coming.
I plan on going to the Rochester Institute of Technology while studying biomedical sciences and playing soccer.
Okay, and we are going to recognize our football team this evening. Head coach Matt Morgan, and the team record was six and four, and qualified for the Whipple playoffs for the second consecutive season. 63 percent of the football players earned honor roll status, and 30 percent were Scholar Athletes with 3.5 GPA or above. So, I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Morgan.
Is that high enough? Everybody got me? We good? Thanks for having us again. Dr. Glasspool, Dr. Rossi, and the rest of the board. Welcome to the new members of the board. We had a pretty good season this past year. As you could tell, we had 15 boys make first, second, or honorable mention for the all-conference this year, which is quite the accomplishment. Couple guys made it consecutive years. So, I just want to go through this, because I'll be here all day if I say something about each kid. But first one's Eric Trends, he's a first-team all-conference guard, was a consecutive, two years in a row, first-team all-conference guard, also a team captain. Next on the list is Ashton Teeter. He was a first-team all-conference wide receiver. Next is Zach Nolan. He got first-team all-conference defensive line. Last year, he was first-team all-conference tight end. Next, Patrick Crossy, first-team defensive back. Last year, he was a second-team honorary. I get a nod from Patrick. He's also a captain, so was Zach Nolan, I'm sorry for not mentioning that. Next is Nick Cox, and he's not here, but he was a first-team all-conference defensive back, and he's only a junior. He's a team captain for next year already. Next is Jake Chaplin. He was actually first-team all-conference punter and kicker, so we only could choose one, so he took kicker. Record holder here at Plum now, surpassed Pat McAfee last year against Collinsville, what, 51, right? Was it 51? Fifty-one? Fifty-two? I don't know. My stat guy's in the crowd. But, yeah. Record holder here at Plum now. All right, next is Keyshawn Smith. He's a second-team all-conference tackle, who's also a team captain for next year. And the best-dressed one out of the bunch, too. Next on the list is Jake Tessick, second-team all-conference offensive tackle. Next is Mike Symboli. He was a second-team all-conference defensive lineman. Last year, he was a second-team all-conference guard. Next is Dylan Whiteman. He was a second-team all-conference middle linebacker. Not in attendance due to a basketball game is Kevin Brown. He was a second-team all-conference defensive back and also named captain. Next is Michael Carrigino. He's an honorable mention center for us this year. Next, who also is not in attendance due to no basketball game is Cory Thomas. He was honorable mention quarterback. Next is Chris Urford. He was an honorable mention defensive lineman. Last on the list is Leighton Qual. He's not in attendance, but he was an honorable mention defensive back. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for letting us come up here today. Quite the accomplishment. All, just shows you how all the hard work pays off for all these guys that get recognized in the conference. It's pretty fantastic for me and for them. So, I'm going to let every one of the seniors come up and let you know what they're doing, their future plans.
Hi, I'm Ashton Teeter, and I'm going to play football in college, and I don't know where I'm going yet. And I'm majoring in either business or criminology.
I'm Eric Trends. I'm going to go to college and continue playing football. I'm going to go and major in pre-health, and I'm not sure where I'm going yet.
Hi, I'm Zach Nolan. I don't know where are we going to college yet, but hopefully it will be for football. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrick Crossy. I, too, don't know where I'm going, but I hope to play football, and I plan on studying civil engineering.
I'm Jake Chaplin. I plan to play football in college and study mechanical engineering.
I'm Jake Tessick. I plan on playing football in college, and I'm undecided on where I'm going.
I'm Mike Symboli. I plan on going to Indiana University of Pennsylvania, pursuing a career in criminology. Criminology.
Hi, I'm Dylan Whiteman. I'm undecided in where I'm going for college. I want to major in criminal justice, and I hope to play football in college.
Hi, I'm Mike Carrigino. I'm undecided about college, too, but I'm going to major in exercise science, and I'm not sure about football either.
Hello, I'm Chris Urford, and I'm going to play football in college. I don't know where yet, but we'll see. Yeah. There you go.
Thank you, everybody. Go ahead, sit down.
I'd like to congratulate all the student athletes. This time, we're going to move forward with the meeting, so if you want to depart, to do your homework, whatever you need to do, you can do it this time.
I'm also going to excuse myself from the meeting. I have a prior commitment at a chorus concert.
Thank you again for coming, and congratulations, and thank you for representing Plum so well.
The Board met at executive session on December 7th, December 8th, and this evening, December 15th, to discuss matters of personnel and negotiations.
Approval of minutes, recommend approval of the following meeting minutes: November 24th, regular board meeting; December 7th, reorganization meeting; December 8th, special voting meeting; and December 8th, committee of the whole meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to entertain any citizen's comments on agenda items. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Citizen's comments on agenda items. Citizen comments on non-agenda items. Come forward and state your name and address.
Steven, too tall for me. Whoa, the football guys. All right. I'm just going to have to hold this. Ed Edwards, 948 Rockland Drive, Plum Berle. Been a resident for roughly 40 years in this community. My son attended Plum High School. He is now practicing attorney in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. My grandson attends Plum High School. I am here today, you know, if you turned on the 6 o'clock news tonight, there's another very unflattering story about Plum High School. I'm here to voice my concern as a parent surrounding the removal of Coach Richards from tonight's game. I think that it might have been completely mishandled, totally mishandled by the administration. And I have had the opportunity to talk with the superintendent today. He was very gracious in addressing some of my questions surrounding the removal of Coach Richards. Let me say this, like your jobs, coaching is not easy. It is not easy. Trying to please every parent, every administrator, it's tough. We all know that. I'm beginning to be embarrassed in my community over the negative publicity surrounding some of the things taking place in this community at our high school. As many parents, a lot of them would have attended tonight, but the kids are playing at McKeesport High School. They could not be here tonight. Now, I know it's a personnel matter, and I don't want to get into personnel matters. What I'd like to talk about is this administration reframing from quick action surrounding an allegation that might be true and might not be true before all the facts are known. I'm not sure what Coach Richards is accused of. I don't really, at this point, care. What I do care about are all the kids that attend our schools in this district. That's where my heart is. I have to turn on the news again and listen to reporters probably misstate the facts, more than likely. And if they are true, whatever he was removed for, then some official statement of some kind needs to be given to the press. You have to talk to the press once something like this gets out. You don't want them to run with misinformation and perhaps tarnish the character of an individual, perhaps an employee like Richards at Plum High School. That's not fair. Our kids, I tell you, their hearts are broken. I was up at the high school when I found out yesterday. I called the superintendent. I'm sure your phone was ringing off the hook, but I was up there. Should have saw the kids. Those kids hurt. They didn't understand what was going on. They had no idea this was going to happen to their coach. And as I explained to the superintendent when we talked this morning, they deserved. They were like, hey, what in the heck is going on? What did he do? Who made that allegation? Who did that to our coach? They wanted to know. The coaches approached me. "Mr. Edwards, what do you know? I'm just a parent. I don't know anything." And then, again, today on the news, I don't know how many of you have seen the news today, today on the news, channel after channel after channel, and then the radio, there it is again. If I would recommend something so humbly to this board and administrators of the school, when you have a situation where a parent makes an allegation, before you find out the facts, I would strongly suggest that a complete and full investigation be carried out. Everyone deserves that. Suppose it was you. Suppose someone came out, are we going to fire or discharge, suspend people over an allegation that may and may not be true? Now, coaches, no matter what school, no matter what city, they have a vocabulary of their own. They don't mean any harm. They're out to motivate, and sometimes it takes a little colorful language to push a player along, if you will. That's what I think the case is here. Nobody has been railroaded more than my grandson by coaches over the years. You know, he's an athlete. All my grandsons are athletes. I've seen it all, city to city, AAU. I mean, I've heard things that I just, I've had to come to grips with, but I understand coaching, as most parents do. But to single out a coach, and again, I'm not sure about what's in his file or the history behind this individual, but, you know, one allegation about what goes on with a football, with a basketball team, I think that, again, everyone deserves the opportunity of due process. Due process. It's the foundation of this country. of due process. Due process. It's the foundation of this country. Due process. To get an allegation in the morning and to let a coach go in the afternoon does not give you time for due process. Period. Now, again, I'm not sure what's in the personnel files. I don't know. But again, I think the board, I'm embarrassed. You should be embarrassed. We're on the news and they're talking about us. I mean, it's bad. This is no joke anymore. As a matter of fact, I think everyone needs a class in media relations, to be perfectly frank, again, and knowing how to handle these issues. You have to talk to the press. Once you make a decision, it's out there. It's out there. You can't hide from it. And if you don't talk, just like tonight, I heard several different versions on television of the story, and then the sex scandal comes in. That ugly picture of what went on at Plum High School comes in. It's not fair to our children. It's not fair. Pardon?
Mr. Edwards, if you could just address the board.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here. I'm a concerned citizen of 40 years. I've seen a lot in this town. I've done a lot in this town. And it's concerning. So, I appreciate the invitation to come in to vent my concern, and I seriously hope you consider bringing back our coach. Continue your investigation. I'm not asking you, I'm not trying to defend him. Everyone's due due process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, Mr. Edwards.
Deanna Turpin, 521 Miller's Lane. I know for a fact, most of you are aware of the situation that happened last Friday with the bus. It took place at 8:30 a.m. of the 12th. I've never been more angry than I was when my son came home to tell me what had occurred and read the letter that came with him. After reading the letter, I questioned my son on several items. He also had the chance to speak with other parents at the time who did not have their children because they were at an after-school movie. How convenient. The stories began about what had occurred or what was thought to have occurred. I emailed Mr. Rogers. I gave you the chance on Friday to get back to me. I also CCD Dr. Glasspool. The only person that I heard from was Mr. Stevens. He's the only one that could care what happened. Yesterday, as the driver was driving our my son home, he slammed on the brakes. My son flew forward and hit his head yet again. This also occurred back in September, and Dr. Glasspool was aware of that. Again, I emailed Mr. Stevens. He was the only one that took the time to go get my son and make sure that he was okay. This isn't Mr. Stevens' problem. This is your problem. This is Mr. Rogers' problem if he is the director of transportation. I want this man off of our bus. Alls he does is speed and he slams on the brakes, and now this incident that just occurred. We know pretty much that the letter that we got was not written by Mr. Stevens. There's no possible way it was written by him. It was from somebody from the board, and copies were made to give to our students. And how convenient that there was an after-school movie taking place that day, so these parents wouldn't get it until after 5 o'clock, and they were unable to contact any of you. I am very upset. If this man is not taken off of our bus, I will contact the media. And I really don't think you guys want that for everything else that's going on right now. I want to know why each parent wasn't called. Why? Why weren't we notified when it happened at 8:30 that morning? You can't answer, can you?
Well, I'm going to be honest with you, Ms. Turpin. I'm not trying to engage you, but a lot of your information is just not accurate at all. And I'm not going to debate it in a public meeting. You can certainly call me if you want, but the board did not craft any letters and didn't tell you to send it home. There was no conspiracy to send it home through an after-school movie. I didn't know there was an after-school movie, and I can assure you that the board didn't as well.
Okay, well, in the letter, it stated that every child had medical attention. Every single child had medical attention. My son didn't have medical attention. I know several other parents have said, what are you talking about? Our child was never seen. Can you answer that since that was in the letter? That was a complete lie.
I think you have to go back to who wrote the letter.
I'd like to know who wrote the letter.
I understand.
So if I meet with you one-on-one, you can tell me who wrote the letter?
Sure.
Okay. Is something going to be done with this driver?
Yes.
When?
Ms. Turpin, did you talk to Mr. Stevens? Did he talk to you about this?
I talked to Mr. Stevens twice. Yeah. I don't feel that this is in Mr. Stevens' hands. I feel this is in your hands. I do. His hands are tied to a certain point, and he has gone above and beyond. Can I ask why I didn't get an email from you or Mr. Rogers as you sat there with a smirk on your face?
All right, you can continue to make statements. We're not going to respond. Keep going.
That's the problem. You don't answer our questions.
That's not the problem, Ms. Turpin. I instructed Mr. Stevens to call you to find out what your concerns were.
It is the problem, just like the Regency issue. You don't answer our questions. Have you toured the Regency lately? Have you been through that school lately? Have any of you? Sue, have you had a chance to tour it?
We're going to discuss, coming up on facilities, the next direction that we're considering as a board, and we'll inform the public during that part of time.
I want to know if you toured it.
The building...
You can't tour the building.
The building is under asbestos remediation. No one's allowed on site.
No, where the kids are right now, the Regency, the old Holiday Park. Have you toured that?
I've been to the building in recent times, and I'll leave Dr. Glasspool to continue.
You can't even answer the question.
Ms. Turpin.
I'm very upset.
I can tell that you're very upset.
My son will not go to the bathroom the entire day because the toilets do not flush, or there is stuff in the toilets, or there's feces on the walls, or the doors don't lock, or if you get in there, they lock in, that the child has to crawl underneath the door. What's your answer for that? That's a health violation. You guys better get your act together or I will contact the media.
All right. Is that coming through okay?
Yeah.
All right. I wanted to comment on the circus I witnessed last week at the special voting meeting. First, Ms. Caldwell made it clear that she didn't know enough about the 1460 Greensburg project, and that was honest, and I appreciate that. That was nice. But instead of abstaining, she voted no. If you don't know what you're voting on, don't vote. Abstain. Unfortunately, this honesty did not carry over to the two votes regarding the Regency project. Despite being sworn in only a day earlier, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Rossler, Mr. Schlock, and Mr. Rogers, all cast votes, obviously were all no votes. At least in the interest of appearing to have some respect for the process and the community, you four should have abstained. The other three votes, Mr. Kalella, Mr. Zuko, and Mr. Daldell, would have al-voted Mrs. Gallagher and Mrs. Stepnick. Further though, with statements like, "Our plan is to put together a plan," which in and of itself shows that this word's promise of having a plan, or at least a viable alternative, was a complete lie. The board should have done one of two things. One, put it out to bid and get the facts. Actually find out what it would cost. At this point, you spent all of this taxpayer money, and you don't even find out the cost of the project before you kill it. And in Mr. Kalella's assertion that it would jeopardize the relationship with the builders, builders of their own accord enter into, or not enter into, the bidding process. They know there may be only one winner, and all other bidders will lose. It is egregious for you to put the relationship with any builder above the needs of this community and its children. Two, you should have postponed the vote until you have all the facts. At least you have had the appearance of honesty and fairness. And the idea of Mr. Kalella's that we need to look at our educational model is laughable. The time for that was before you built two new schools and gutted a third and redistricted and borrowed $10 million to build a third. To that end, as we, the taxpayers, are on the hook for that $10 million, what are your plans for the Regency money? You have already spent $5 million of that. Only $1 million was spent for Regency, and that $1 million is now down the drain under Mr. Kalella's presidency. And where now, under Mr. Daldell's presidency, are you getting the money to add on to Center or to add on to O Block? Where is that money coming from? And now, per the Republicans' election promise of not raising taxes, how do you plan to achieve these construction projects without borrowing or raising taxes? What is your plan? You may be untouchable, but you are answerable to the tax-paying families of Plum. It is clear you do not have, nor have you had, a plan. New board members' actions have shown they're merely puppets, voting as they are told. And Mr. Daldell, I had hoped that you, the one who wanted more information before making a decision, would have proceeded with the bid process to actually get these facts before just making a decision. By your actions, you showed that you two are but a puppet, one with a new name tag.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm too short for that. Dr. Glasspool, I guess this comment goes to you. Concerning the bus issue of 139 on Friday, I think that if the time has come that we need to have a meeting with you, Mr. Stevens, the Ronic people, and all the parents of Bus 139, because it is getting to the point that it's becoming dangerous. This morning, the bus showed up almost five minutes early. The driver stopped, picked up one child, saw two vehicles coming down that he sees there every morning, and chose to shut the doors and take off. So, given the fact of the action of what happened on Friday at Regency with the bus going forward, we've heard six different stories. I think as a parent, my son has a name. He's not a number, as all the other kids on that bus are. These kids may have student numbers. They've got names. They've got families. We, the parents of Bus 139, want a meeting with you and Ronic and Scott. I did talk to Mr. Brewer today. This has to come to light, and this has to be solved before somebody gets critically injured. It's the only way to see it. My next rumor has it, there is a breakout of lice at Holiday Park Elementary. All these elementary kids are involved in all of these activities out in the community. I think we need to be notified so we can stop it before it goes any further. I understand, I've spoken to some of the Holiday Park people that we found out today. It is in grades three and five. Only the grades that have had it have been notified. Lice can spread through this community and into everyone's houses. It needs to be addressed. On October 28th, regular voting meeting concerning the Regency Park Elementary Building, page 9, paragraph 4, recommend approval of the resolution authorizing and directing the school district's officials, solicitor, underwriter, bond counsel, to make all necessary preparations for the sale and issuance of a general obligation bond. It was voted by Mr. Daldell, Mrs. Gallagher, Mr. McGuff, Mrs. Stepnick, Mr. Tomorello, Mrs. White, and Mr. Zuko, to pass borrowing the $10 million bond for Regency, of which a great portion has been spent. Again, we, the parents of Regency Park, need answers. Mr. Edwards, I fully agree with you. I am out in this community as a parent, as a foster parent, as a casa. And when I hear from other foster parents, I'm glad my children are not in the Plum Borough School District with everything that's going on. It's a laughing stock. Something needs to stop. Whether the media, Dr. Glasspool, Dr. Rossi, you have a press conference and open it up and clean it up. We are the laughing stocks of what is out there right now in the community education-wise. Today was just another slap in the face. And finally, since we are taking the school board meetings, it seems like a road show because we're going from this building to that building, I'd like to know when we can have it at Regency so the community can actually see what we deal with on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Leigh Anne Weiss. I live at 425 Vale Avenue. And this is my first time back to the new pivot since the building first opened. I think my first board meeting was here in 2011, '12. I've been to so many meetings, and I know I've shared so many different comments. But again, I'm here to speak on behalf of people that don't have the opportunity to vote. And I know that at a recent school board meeting, Mr. Kalella had stated that he works for the voters. And again, I would like to remind you of your charge of putting students first. So I brought back my sign from October that actually has a picture of all of the children at their last day at Regency Park Elementary back in the summertime. This was the final day of school. Our PTA, which I just want to give a shout out to our PTA, by the way, who's here, I just want to say that they put on a beautiful carnival, and the kids had a wonderful fun last day. And the teachers are busily packing up their rooms in preparation for the temporary move to the old Holiday Park Building. And all the children were taking paint and putting their hands up on the walls of the building to sort of leave their final mark. And we gathered all of the children together for a final picture in front of the old Regency Park Building. And I just want to show this to you and ask you to look at this, because these aren't just only 200 children that you have to find a place for and crunch numbers and consolidate. These are 236, actually 237 children that deserve your leadership. They deserve to know where they're going to school. They deserve to be put first. They're not a number to be crunched. And I just really want to ask you to answer our questions. Please answer our questions. Provide a safe learning environment for our children. Our children deserve a school like this one. They deserve that. You borrowed $10 million. $1 million has already been spent on plans. You showed our children pictures of that building. You looked our kids in the face and said, well, kids, I guess you're getting your new building, back in March. I'm angry. All of these parents are angry. How can you do this? That's why our school is a laughing stock. It's not just because of the sex scandal, not just because, it's every time we turn around, we turn on the TV, or we get an email, and it's like everyone rolls their eyes. Another inept leadership decision in this district. It's infuriating. Please, look at these kids and understand, this is why we're here. We want answers. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Weiss.
We got another person here.
Regurban 413 Mower Drive. Mr. Zuko, as the facilities chairman, is it true that Regency's being torn down completely, or is it just being remediated for asbestos?
This isn't a question and answer section, but I was going to address that. It's the next item in facilities.
Okay.
If I wanted, I'll jump ahead.
Okay, I'll wait for your answer at the meeting.
Yeah, we need to discuss it at facilities.
But my question is, if you don't have a plan for all these kids, why are you tearing or even thinking about tearing that building down? Move the kids to Regency, back to Regency, and when Mr. Kalella's study about, we're going to lose so many people, after five years, you can close Regency and you won't have to build an addition because there won't be any students. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Is it short comment?
Mr. Edwards, you can do it. Yeah, very short. I just want to be clear that I'm not asking for a press conference, because I think that's a mistake. Just a word to the press that it is a personnel matter, and that when you have personnel matters, that it is customary not to address them with the media until it's resolved, so that they can't run away with their version of a rumored story. So, that's the point, because press conferences can get you in trouble too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did, I did put a statement out.
Oh, you did?
To everyone that asked and... To everyone that asked, and I can't control what they report.
Oh, I know.
I can't control who they talk to, what they speculate about, and the rumors that are going on out there. But I was very concise, and I did copy all of the board and our solicitor on the response. So it was very consistent. So thank you.
Can I just move on with the agenda, please?
Facilities Committee, Mr. Rich Zuko, Chair, recommend approval to pay the GOB invoices as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
I second it.
We have a motion and second to approve the GOB invoices. Any questions? Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Facilities Committee met on December 8th, 2015. Mr. Zuko will make this report.
I told you it was coming right up.
But you're going to speak right into it with the...
All right. I'm sorry. Okay. As part of this report, on December 8th, special voting meeting, the board approved the lowest bidder for the renovation of the new mechanics garage and transportation terminal. I do believe the work has already started, but unfortunately, with permits, et cetera, that have to be compiled, we don't expect the completion to take more than several months. Obviously, heating will be the first item to be moved on, and then other items in plumbing. At that same voting meeting, the board rescinded the November 17th motion to submit the Plan Con Part F documents, and it also voted to rescind the option and alternatives for sending out the bids for that new Regency. So the next meeting will be on January 12th, and we're going to discuss all that. And there was plans, there have been plans, but not everyone likes the plans. So then we go back and revise the plans and try to accommodate plans. Right now, the building cannot be... You can't go into it, well, you can't.
Occupied.
No, you can't have admittance to it because of the asbestos abatement. Whether or not that school would be torn down or remodeled or anything, the asbestos would still have to be done, so that cost would be incurred one way or another. There were engineering costs and design costs, but there are also flaws in the structure. Whether or not it's not going, we, I think, are going to be putting forth discussion as to whether or not to delay the demolition or postpone it until all the alternatives have been examined again thoroughly. Originally, we had, I think there were five different possible plans, and little by little, you know, you have to have enough votes to put one plan forward. And although some people liked one plan, other people didn't. The plans that were settled on came basically by default, and then we found out they weren't perfect either. And I think that's where a lot of the problem comes in, because there is a plan of where to put the children. They're not going to be squeezed into another school. We're not going to have 11 runs, and we're not going to have 30 kids in a classroom. It's never going to happen. Okay? Okay. Again, we're going to have the Facilities meeting on January 12th, and if you'd like to attend, and we're going to throw everything up on a wall and look at all the pros and cons, because for everything that we thought might work, there were reasons that it wouldn't. And it kind of worked back and forth that way. It was kind of like find the best of the worst alternatives.
So just to clarify, so that everyone heard, I have, we're working with the demolition contractor to ensure that the building is not demolished prior to the 12th. The building will be abated regardless of whether the building's demolished or not. Fair assumption, fair...
Yes, maybe he said it better than I did.
Thanks.
Can I comment? Are you finished, Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
On that item? Thank you. Just to clarify for the community, I have never been in favor of eliminating a school from that area and taking a school from that community. And that is part of why I voted against spending what I thought was a little bit on the high end of a sum on the bus garage. If any parts of those funds can be used to keep Regency in some manner in that community as a school for those residents, I'm in favor of that. And I understood from Dr. Glasspool that we possibly could have done the bus garage for less money than what we voted on last week. So I voted against it. I've urged Dr. Glasspool to get in touch with Mr. Russo, which he has now, to look at that contract that is for demolition of four buildings in our community, because Regency is one of those, and I don't want that building demolished. I need proof, and I have not yet seen proof, and that's what we're going to work on at a committee level, as to whether or not that school is capable of safely educating our children. I'm a new board member, and I have yet to see any documentation that tells me that that isn't safe. So that's what I care, what I plan to do in January, and I invite input from all of you. You've been great. I care about your kids as much as you do. The negative rhetoric is not productive. That's why I contacted Dr. Glasspool and have spoken with, you know, the board members. And now, Mr. Russo has been contacted to either, number one, make that a deduct change order where we would deduct Regency from that demolition contract as one piece of four, or number two, at least postpone it till I can get information and the new board members can. So please, be patient with us. I wouldn't expect you folks to make those types of decisions in a matter of a couple weeks. That's why I voted what I did, and I stand by my votes, because I'm trying to do the best what's for every kid and every citizen in this community. And I am not opposed to keeping that school and making it a conducive place to educate the great kids at Plum. Thank you.
The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, following Food Service and Nutrition in the High School Boardroom. Personnel Committee, Mr. Steve Schlock, Chair, recommend approval to accept the retirement of Rick Coon, custodian effective December 31, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Judy Lamorte, bus driver, effective December 31, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Erica Skinner, interim school psychologist, effective December 31, 2015.
That says resignation.
I apologize. Resignation.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Teresa D'Amico, bus aide, retroactive to November 30, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Ryan Johni, part-time custodian, retroactive to December 10, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to create two paraprofessional positions for 35 hours per week at the contracted rate.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Tanya Tost, paraprofessional at Center Elementary School with the contracted rate effective December 17, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire James George, paraprofessional at Regency Park Elementary School with the contracted rate effective December 16, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Gina Yvonne, part-time school psychologist at a per diem rate of $190 for 20 hours per week with a start date to be determined by the superintendent and end date not to exceed the end of the 2015-16 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Karen Brinker, bus driver, at the contracted rate December 16, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval for leave for Tracy Heffron, beginning on or about June 7, 2016, through October 2, 2016.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept an intermittent leave for Jeff Weber, beginning December 16, for a period not to exceed one year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a professional contract for Stephanie Riley after successfully completing three years of service.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Education Committee, Mrs. Sue Caldwell, Chair, recommend approval, Glade Run Lutheran Services Agreement as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
We have a motion and a...
Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Education Committee met on December 8, 2015. Mrs. Caldwell, make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. We did meet, and that was an abbreviated meeting as we were new board members. What I did want to make the community aware of is that in the January education meeting, we'll be discussing the tentative calendar for the 2016-17 school year... I'm sorry, 2015-16 school year.
16-17.
16-17 school year. And also the proposed time changes for start and end times for the different levels of education throughout the district. And I want to thank Guy Rossi and Chris Brewer. They got that up. It's now on the main page of the school district website, if anyone's interested in looking at what's proposed, and feel free to bring your comments to the January meeting. At that time, we'll also be discussing elementary emotional disability, special ed classroom addition, and academic program changes for the following school year, one-to-one iPad implementation, and textbook adoptions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 5th, at 6:00 PM in the High School Boardroom. Finance Committee, Mr. Sal Kellella, Chair, recommend approval of the Treasurers Report and Bill Payments for December 2015 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two will be eliminated from the agenda. Item three, the Finance Committee met on December 8, 2015. Mr. Kellella will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. Just to go back to item number two, we probably have enough cash flow in the district to end us, or take us through the end of January, so we're not in need of a tax anticipatory note or a revenue anticipatory note at this time. And we're just took that off the agenda for that reason. Of course, y'all know we have no state budget. They're still working in Harrisburg with that. With that being said, we have no ideas what our reimbursement for cyber charter schools is going to be. We have no idea what our Plan Con reimbursement for these new buildings are going to be. We have no idea what our special ed reimbursement is going to be, and we certainly have no idea what our state funding is going to be for basic education. On the 8th, we did do some things to the budget. We looked at some revenue sources and increased those dramatically, about $1.4 million. That being said, we do have a balanced budget using $2.45 million from our general fund. That takes the general fund almost to zero, and that's not acceptable, as far as I'm concerned. We continue to look at specific things. One of the things that we're going to be looking at is we've asked the Allegheny County... We will be asking the Allegheny County Healthcare Consortium to come to the district and explain to us why there's a 5% tax increase. I've studied their balance sheet significantly over the past two weeks, so they have some answers to us. We need to look at, not only that, we need to look at the capital size interest that we have for our bonds. That, moving forward, is going to impact our district significantly in next year. That being said, the Finance Committee will embark on a strategic plan, a five-year budget plan for this district. There's no way in the world we can run this district without a five-year plan, and that will include capital expenditures also. Hopefully, there's going to be a budget this week coming up. I'd like to schedule a budget workshop for December 22nd and January the 5th. That's contingency on the state passing a budget and notifying us. The state does have money in an escrow account that will be deposited into our account, Mr. Maricini, almost immediately.
It'll be deposited January 4th pursuant to the passing of the budget. It's $4.8 million.
Thank you, Gene. The other thing that we need to do is, we will be looking at capital projects and the impact, not only short-term but long-term for this district. When we do a capital project, we do an Act 34 hearing. We need to do that with whatever we decide with the Regency Park issue. We need to look going at what's it going to cost taxpayers in the next 25 years. It's just not, it's just not borrowing money. And whenever you look at Regency Park, that school was to cost $14 million. Whether we use the bond money from the 2014 bond, or we borrowed more money, that school would cost $14 million. It doesn't matter where you get the money. So for some people to come and tell me that that's their money, that's not their money. That money is used for capital projects. The cost of Regency Park School would be $14 million, whether it be from this bond issue or additional bond issues. Now, that being said, when we look at the Regency Park project and any project moving forward, we're going to look at specific things. Utility costs, electric, gas, water, salaries, other costs, monitoring, insurance, general supplies. We're going to look at debt service. We're going to look at all this stuff and put it in a nice spreadsheet so the taxpayers know, over 25 years, what schools cost and how we're going to pay for them. We're not just going to build a school and say, "We're not going to raise your taxes." That being said, we're going to talk about this starting in January. We're going to have a strategic planning committee for the Finance Committee. We're going to have a five-year plan. We need to do that. People need to know moving forward. Right now, I can tell you that we probably have a negative fund balance. Like I said at that meeting, that is, means that our liabilities are greater than our assets right now. We have to tighten our belt, we have to move forward, and we need to make sure up the general fund. But right now, we do have a preliminary budget that is balanced. So if we need to move that forward for, be posted by January the 7th, we can do that. It is a balanced budget. That's about all I have. Dr. Glasspool, thank you so much.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 19th, following special voting meeting in the High School Boardroom. It's going to combine Safe and Supportive Schools and Policy Committee tonight. Mrs. Vicky Rossler, Chair. The Policy and Safe and Supportive Schools Committee will meet on Tuesday, January 5th, following the education meeting in the Plum High School Boardroom. Mrs. Ross will make this report.
I just want to start off by thanking Kevin Daldell for giving me the opportunity to chair the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Talking to it?
Just talk right into it.
Okay. Fellow committee members are Michelle Gallagher and Jim Rogers. I would like to thank Michelle Gallagher for all her work as the previous committee chair, and I look forward to working with both Michelle and Jim. I have an update on Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries. On October 27th, the Board of Directors adopted Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Student Boundaries. This week, we'll complete the first round of training for employees, coaches, and volunteers. Along with Mr. Kellella, I sat yesterday on the training for district employees that work at the high, that work at the high school. Dr. Glasspool facilitated this training. He reviewed the administrative regulations, conducted a question and answer session. I think the training went well and was well-received, and relevant questions were asked by employees. I want to personally thank Dr. Glasspool for sending a clear message to the employees, coaches, and volunteers in this district on how we will maintain professional boundaries. I have two announcements. One, I'll be holding two meetings for the Safe and Supportive School Advisory Council in January. The purpose, the first, the purpose of the first meeting is to discuss a possible safety coordinator position for the school district, and also to present and discuss options for a third-party hotline.[1762.42] I'll be taking the Advisory Council's final recommendations along with mine back to the board for discussion. The second meeting will be later in the month. There will be an open platform for discussion on how the district can do a better job of communicating to truly make this a safe and supportive school district. The invitation is open to the Plum community, including employees of the district, especially those employees with children in the district. I want to hear, I want this board to hear what this community has to say. The dates will be announced on the website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing, Ms. Rossler?
Yes.
I have to give some acknowledgement to the administrative staff. We did put a deadline of December 22 for this training, and it was an enormous amount of work that they had to do to not only look at the policy, develop the ARs, and train our employees. So I have to give them some recognition there. I think they did a wonderful job. Also, on the 21st, Ms. Rossler, I think you and I are attending a symposium concerning sexual misconduct.
Correct.
And we'll report back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation Committee, Mr. Jim Rogers, Chair. Mr. Rogers, do you have a report this evening?
I'm sorry.
Do you have a report this evening?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Athletic Committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, Chair, recommend approval to hire the following coaches at the contracted rate for the spring season as listed.
As a committee member and at the request of Mrs. Gallagher, I'll make those recommendations on behalf of the committee. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches for the 2015-16 school year as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for volunteer coaches. Any discussion?
Just a reminder to the public that these are individuals who are literally volunteering their time. There's no stipend or salary involved, and we thank them for stepping forward to volunteer.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Food Service and Nutrition Committee, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick, Chair. The Food Service and Nutrition Committee will meet on Tuesday, January 12, in the high school boardroom. Intergovernmental Committee, Ms. Sue Caldwell, Chair. There is no report this evening. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. Jim Rogers, Representative. There is no report this evening. Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, Representative. There is no report this evening. By the State of Policy Council, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick, Representative. There is no report this evening. President's Report, Mr. Kevin Del Dell. Mr. Del Dell will make this report.
Thank you.[1677.01]